Alright, let's get started. Today, we are doing the, the last, I don't know, what I've, I've come to have fun calling it episode because you know, like anybody else, I, I like to watch, uh, I like to binge watch a show every once in a while. So that's kind of what we're doing. We, we've, we've got this show. We've got this, this online Bible study. And now that we're finishing it, people can go on and binge it if they want to. Wouldn't that be interesting? Um, so today is, uh, David and Bathsheba, um, the, that, that line out of Matthew chapter one where, uh, it just says, you know, that, uh, Solomon, the son of David, whose mother had been Uriah's wife. You know, there's a, there's a little bit of a hint there. Um, uh, kind of a, almost, almost like, you know, tongue in cheek, like we all know what happened there. Um, but, uh, to kind of get us started first, wanted to take a peek at this, uh, this map here. Give us an idea of where, where we're talking about. So, uh, at the beginning of, of the story, David is hanging out in Jerusalem. And the army with, uh, Joab in command is besieging Raba or Rabat. Uh, however you want to spell it or pronounce it, it's just fine. Uh, but that, uh, that city is, is still there. Um, and, uh, I've, I've, I've visited it. It was kind of one of those weird things that, uh, you know, this Bible story. And then you go to the city and you walk around a mall. It's like, yeah, I suppose the rest of the world has moved on. Um, and, uh, it's, it's not the way it used to be. But, uh, not that far apart, as you can see, uh, the, the key here of just 10 miles, maybe 30 miles, uh, away from each other. Uh, but that's, that's, those are the two locations where these, where the, the action is happening here. Uh, and then, um, I wanted to quickly take us through the, uh, this cast of characters here. Uh, we have David. Uh, God's opinion of David, uh, that, uh, he says, "The Lord has sought out a man after his own heart and appointed him leader of his people." Um, yeah. There, there isn't anyone else in the Bible that was, that has spoken in these same kind of glowing terms. Um, obviously there were, there were other people who, who were, were close to God in that, but, you know, a man after his own heart. I think that's, that's unique to David. Uh, and then, uh, first Samuel 16 verse seven, "But the Lord said to Samuel," this is when Samuel is anointing David. Um, "Do not consider his appearance or his height." And, and speaking of David's oldest brother. Uh, "Do not consider his appearance or his height, for I have rejected him." The Lord does not look at the things man looks at. Man looks at the outward appearance, but the Lord looks at the heart. So why did David, why was David chosen by the Lord to be king? Because of what, um, the Lord saw in his heart and what the Lord had created in his heart? Uh, a man who, uh, who followed the Lord. The nation's opinion of him, uh, first Samuel eight, 19 to 20. When they, when they asked for a king, they said, "We want a king over us to lead us and go out before us and fight our battles." Uh, they wanted a military king. First Samuel 18, 10 chapters later, "But all Israel and Judah loved David because he led them in their campaigns." So what they asked for is what he did, uh, and that was not only a big reason why he became king, humanly speaking, but it was when people thought about the king, they thought about a general. Um, they thought about a military leader. Um, and that was a, uh, just a huge part of his role. Uriah the Hittite, uh, old, old timey medieval picture of, of Uriah there kneeling before, before King David in very European looking, uh, style. But uh, second Samuel 23, these are the names of David's mighty men, and then it lists off a whole bunch of them. And then, and Uriah the Hittite, there were 37 in all. Uh, so Uriah the Hittite, one of David's mighty men, one of his, uh, one of the heroes of the nation. Um, not just a, a military, uh, uh, maybe an officer or something like that, but, but a military hero, a famous man. Bathsheer, Bathsheba, daughter of Eliam. Um, again, these are the names of David's mighty men, Eliam, son of Ahithophel the Gaol Knight. Um, it, it is, it never like, it, it doesn't, the Bible doesn't connect, is this the same Eliam? But it also doesn't not connect them. So I, I think it's a pretty safe assumption that this is the same Eliam. Um, but, uh, uh, so again, Bathsheba, the, uh, um, the daughter of one of his mighty men again, and also Eliam, son of Ahithophel. Ahithophel was one of David's close advisors. So these are not, these are not random people. Uh, these were, these were people who were important in David's government, uh, and people that he would have, should have known personally. Um, so second Samuel 16. Now, in those days, the advice Ahithophel gave was like that of one who required inquiries of God. That was how both David and Absalom regarded all of Ahithophel's advice. So again, you see the connection there. So question?
Um, so with that in mind, in, in terms of everybody, you know, that was a tight knit group, his, his mighty advisors. Um, shouldn't he have known, he asked, who is that woman? Would he have known who lived there or could it have been just servants that he was wondering about? I mean, who is that? I mean, who else would it have been?
Um, I think it would be, it would be reasonable in, in two ways to say. One, um, how about this? It, it's somebody that he should at least be aware of.
Okay.
So when we, you know, like, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get into it. And, and, uh, one of the, the translation questions that I asked in there was, was, uh, you know, when the servant comes back and says, "Isn't that Bathsheba?" Um, kind of, I think the, the implication there is, shouldn't you realize that? Shouldn't, you know, shouldn't you recognize that? Shouldn't you remember that? Um, uh, why are you inquiring after the wife of one of your mighty men? And the daughter of one of your mighty men and the granddaughter of one of your advisors?
Um, right, okay.
Also, there's the, uh, the concept of, um, you don't always remember who somebody is in a context you're not used to them in.
True.
You know, if you're not real, real familiar with a certain individual, and then you, you, you see them outside, you know, David didn't see her in, you know, standing next to her husband in the court. He saw her in the bath without her husband. And, you know, so, uh, that recognition might have been missing. So, um, so that's, that's our, our cast of characters there. And then, uh, we will jump into the, um, kind of the big idea and then do a little bit of reading. So big idea for David, "If only I hadn't." Have you ever said those words? "We are sinful people who make mistakes, and that leads to regrets." Some of those regrets pass quickly. They are small things. But then there are the others. "The regrets that weigh on our souls and lives and make us cry out, 'If only I hadn't.'" These are regrets that come from life-changing sins. How do we deal with them? How do we avoid them in the first place? So, uh, we'll revisit that, uh, at the end, uh, and for now, we'll, we'll do, uh, a little bit of reading here. Because our first, uh, question, we're, we're going to want to be looking at second Samuel 11 verses one to 27. Um, I think I've got that here. Yep. So, uh, second Samuel 11, starting at verse one. "In the spring, at the time when kings go off to war, David sent Joab out with the king's men and the whole Israelite army. They destroyed the Ammonites and besieged Rabbil, but David remained in Jerusalem. One evening, uh, David got up from his bed and walked around on the roof of his palace. From the roof, he saw a woman bathing. The woman was very beautiful, and David sent someone to find out about her. The man said, 'She is Bathsheba, the daughter of Eliam and the wife of Uriah the Hittite.'" So this is the NIV 2011. As you can see, just about every other translation, um, translates that I think more faithfully to the Hebrew with a question. The man said, "Isn't this Bathsheba, the daughter of Eliam and the wife of Uriah the Hittite?" Uh, and similar, um, similar other examples there. "Then David sent messengers to get her. She came to him, and he slept with her. Now she was purifying herself from her monthly uncleanness. Then she went back home. The woman conceived and sent word to David saying, 'I am pregnant.' So David sent this word to Joab, 'Send me Uriah the Hittite.' And Jo, and Joab sent him to David. When Uriah came to him, David asked him how, asked him how Joab was, how the soldiers were, how the war was going. Then David said to Uriah, 'Go down to your house and wash your feet.' So Uriah left the palace, and a gift from the king was sent after him. But Uriah slept at the entrance to the palace with all his master servants and did not go down to his house. David was told, 'Uriah did not go home.' So he asked Uriah, 'Haven't you just come from the military campaign? Why didn't you go home?' Uriah said to David, "'The ark and Israel and Judah are staying in tents, and my commander Joab and my lord's men are camped in the open country. How could I go to my house to eat and drink and make love to my wife? As surely as you live, I will not do such a thing.'" Then David said to him, "'Stay here one more day, and tomorrow I will send you back.'" So Uriah remained in Jerusalem that day and the next. At David's invitation, he ate and drank with him, and David made him drunk. But in the evening, Uriah went out to sleep on his mat among his master servants. He did not go home. In the morning, David wrote a letter to Joab and sent it with Uriah. In it, he wrote, "Put Uriah out in front where the fighting is fiercest, then withdraw from him, so he will be struck down and die." So while Joab had, Joab had the city under siege, he put Uriah at a place where he knew the strongest defenders were. When the men of the city came out and fought against Joab, some of the men in David's army fell. Moreover, Uriah the Hittite died. Joab sent David a full account of the battle. He instructed the messenger, "When you finish giving the king this, this account of the battle, the king's anger may flare up, and he may ask you, 'Why did you get so close to the city to fight? Didn't you know they would shoot arrows from the wall? Who killed Abimelech, son of Jeroboam? Didn't a woman drop an upper millstone on him from the wall so that he died in Thebes? Why did you get so close to the wall? If he asks you this, then say to him, 'Moreover, your servant Uriah the Hittite is dead.'" The messenger set out, and when he arrived, he told David everything Joab had sent him to say. The messenger said to David, "'The men overpowered us and came out against us in the open, but we drove them back to the entrance of the city gate. Then the archers shot arrows at your servants from the wall, and some of the king's men died. Moreover, your servant Uriah the Hittite is dead.'" David told the messenger, "Say this to Joab. Don't let this upset you. The sword devours one as well as another. Press the attack against the city and destroy it. Say this to encourage Joab. When Uriah's wife heard that her husband was dead, she mourned for him. After the time of mourning was over, David had her brought to his house, and she became his wife and bore him a son. But the thing David had done displeased the Lord." So, uh, status check, second Samuel 11, especially verse one. Uh, "We all have our spiritual highs and lows, times when our trust in God and life of obedience are strong. And then there's those other times." Uh, what does verse one reveal about David's, King David's spiritual life at this time? Uh, you look at that, uh, uh, at that beginning. "In the spring, at the time when kings go off to war, David sent," I, I, I think it's, David sent Joab out with the king's men. It, it's, you've got the first hint. And then you've got the second hint, that that's with the king's men and the whole Israelite army. And then if, if you finally didn't get those first two hints, you have that third hint. "But David remained in Jerusalem." Um, David is not doing what he is supposed to be doing. Uh, David is not fulfilling his role. Um, David is not acting out what God has called him to be. Uh, and so when we, when we, very often when we fail to do what God would have us do or fail to fulfill the roles that God would have us fulfill, um, that's a wonderful time for the devil to come in and fill our time with something else. Um, so, uh, just a, some, some interesting hints, uh, in the text about, yeah, David's not doing what he's supposed to be doing. And then also a great reminder of, um, the things that God has placed in front of us to do, the roles he's called us to fill. Um, we are, we are best off when we actually do fulfill those things, when we actually do be what God wants us to be. Um, let's see. Next one, uh, the, that, that, that thing that we, we, I mentioned earlier, uh, in the scripture reading resource, there's multiple translations of verse three. Uh, NIV 2011 edition puts itself in the minority by translating this verse as a statement rather than a question. What do you think the messenger is implying by responding with a question? I just can't get around the feeling of, you, you know who this is. Why, why are you asking me who this is? And now that you, now that you know who this is, um, why, what's going on here? You know, as a, especially a servant going to a king, um, think about how that, that conversation must have gone. You know, what does David tell the servant? Hey, who, who's, who's the beautiful woman that lives in the house that, that I can see from the roof? I mean, that's got, that's an awkward question, isn't it? It's not the kind of question you want to ask. Um, um, it's, it's also just kind of amazing that David would even ask. It's kind of embarrassed, an embarrassing question to ask, or it should be. Uh, and then when that servant comes back, go ahead.
Uh, no, it really should be something that he should not want to ask his servant.
Right. Um, stuff he shouldn't want to ask anybody. And then when the servant comes back and just says, uh, "Isn't that the wife of your war buddy? And your, uh, and the, the daughter of your other war buddy? Um, and the granddaughter of one of your, 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 uh, advisors?" Um, there, there are a lot of, uh, of TV shows and movies out there about the, um, the, the guy who doesn't, you know, the, the, the war buddy who doesn't go to war, who cheats on the buddy's wife who is at war, right? I mean, that idea, you know, that, that kind of betrayal is, is such a, a, a strong kind of betrayal that, that it, it lives on in, in, uh, uh, stories even today. And then, you know, verse four, "Well, then David sent messengers to get her." He knows exactly who she is. She knows exactly who her husband is. He knows exactly who her father and her, um, and her grandfather are. But he'll have her anyway. Just doesn't matter. Um,
So Dave, were, were these houses really close to each other?
Yeah. Um, in fact, there's even a, uh, having been there, I can attest to that. Um, but it, it's in one of the Psalms, I believe. It talks about Jerusalem as, as being a city that is tightly packed together. Uh, and then, and it really is, uh, especially at, uh, at King's, King David's time. Um, you know, I mean, hey, we're, we're on computers. Um,
Cause I'm imagining them right up next to each other, and he can see down from his roof down onto her roof.
Right. And so like this, this picture here, let's see if I can get a bigger, bigger version of it. Yeah, there we go. Perfect. Um, Mount Moriah is where the temple was, was eventually built. Yeah, they're showing David's palace here, the, um, the, the stone terraces. Um, that, that is still, that still exists. I have a picture of that that I took myself when I was there in Jerusalem with Randy. Um, and, uh, so, so that's right there. But those terraces, yeah, David's up high, and then, yeah, the houses were right there. And this is, this is not big. Um, we don't have a, uh, uh, oh, what do you call it? Um, a key here to show us, but this is all close walking distance kind of stuff. So, yeah, yeah, very close together, not that many people in the city. Um, but again, um, I suppose David could possibly not recognize her right away. Next one, yeah, kind of personal, don't you think? Uh, there's a phrase in parentheses in verse four that seems unnecessary at first. It even seems a bit intrusive. So much so that we might skip over it without thinking about it. Um, I know that, uh, especially when I was a, uh, a, a much younger, you know, young man sort of, oh, read that and, oh, no, I don't want to think about that. I don't know. I, I, uh, yeah, it's just kind of one of those, uh, uh, things at verse four, it says, um, he, she came to him and he slept with her. Now she was purifying herself, herself from her monthly, monthly uncleanness. And you go, what, what's going on here? Well, what it tells you in kind of a tactful way, she wasn't pregnant when she got there. Yeah, just that very simple fact, before she showed up at David's palace, she was not pregnant and she knew it. And then only a few words later, she's sending that message back to David, "I am pregnant." Uh, so it, it's, uh, uh, it tells us something important, that fact that, that she, uh, was not pregnant and knew it. Uh, Matt's comment here, yeah, David knew that it was quite possible that she could get pregnant. Now, if whether David knew that or not, Bathsheba knew that. Um, and, um, we can be certain that then we know whose baby this is. It's not Uriah's. It's David's. And now this, this is, um, my reason for asking this question is, uh, I want us to understand just how kind of devious King David gets. Um, because what, what's really, what you can really see happening here is David starts out in a place where he's just, he's not fulfilling his role. Then he ends up in a place where, all right, he sees, he sees a woman bathing in a tightly packed together city. Yeah, the, 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 uh, uh, the appropriate thing for him to do in that moment would have been to just bounce his eyes off of that and go on with his day. Instead, he thinks about it. He pursues it. He, 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 he decides on it. He, he acts on it. Um, and, and you can just kind of see David spiritually crumbling and, and degrading as this goes through. So, um, in verse eight, we get another, another extra phrase. King David sends a gift after Uriah. You see that right here? Uh, then David said to Uriah, "Go, go down to your house and wash your feet." So Uriah left the palace, and a gift from the king was sent after him. Is he sending a bottle of wine? Some roses? A romantic mixtape? Um, what David wants to happen when Uriah goes home is obvious. But why send a gift? And maybe even more oddly, why do we need to know about it? I think your comment here, Sue, was good. You know, that David does have some multiple plans to cover up his sin. But what does David learn by sending the gift? Oops.
Well, he probably learns that Uriah didn't receive it. He never went there to his home.
And how would David have known that Uriah never went home? If he didn't send something there and didn't have some reason to knock on the door? Right? So it sounds really nice. Oh, he's sending him a gift. What's the motivation behind sending him the gift? I think that is, that's apparent. Um, because it says, you know, a gift was from the king was sent after him. And then immediately after that, you see, that's how the king, that's how David knew.
Yeah. He wants to see who answers the door.
Exactly, right?
Yeah.
Um, and, and David was told, "Uriah did not go home."
Yeah, he's, he's making sure that he's, he's covered. And what happens is, he's not. So now he's got to go into plan B.
Uh huh. Yeah. Plan A did not work. Uh, your, 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 your point is absolutely right. Um, and, and I, I, I look at verse 10, you know, David was told, "Uriah did not go home." It's not that somebody didn't come to him and say, you know, the, the bearer of the gift didn't come, say, um, "Uriah's, Uriah's sleeping or, uh, or sleeping with, with the rest of the servants, or I gave it to Bathsheba," or any of that. He comes back with that very specific piece of information, "Uriah did not go home." Which implies to me, that is why he was sent. That's why the messenger was sent with the gift, and the messenger knew it. Um, yeah, Uriah did not go home.
And so now the messenger is compliant in all of this.
The amount of com- different number of people that are complicit, that might be something to just-
Yeah, that's the word I wanted. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna do that. I'm gonna keep a list of, of, uh, people that David dragged down with him. Right? So we've got, um, we've got the messenger with the gift. We've got Bathsheba, right? I mean, um,
Well, and we have the person that went to find out who it was.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I want to include that person because they did come back and go, uh,
Yeah, you should probably shouldn't be doing this.
Yeah, at, at least a little bit. Um, but at the same time too, go and find out about that woman. Why? Um, cause I saw her naked, you know, the, the, yeah, so there's, maybe that messenger would be included in the list. I'm not sure. Who knows? Maybe it's the same guy.
Yeah, it could be the same guy. And, you know, I get the feeling that King David, he was king. He just gave out orders and they just followed him. They didn't ask why. They just did it.
And, uh, and anytime that kind of power goes to somebody's head, that's a dangerous situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, I, uh, while the text, the, 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 the whole account puts the responsibility primarily and rightly so on David. Um, it never says, well, the, the thing Bathsheba had done displeased the Lord. Uh, I, I have heard people say, oh, well, you know, Bathsheba didn't have a choice. Bathsheba was, you know, was Bathsheba, you know, sexually assaulted or this or that. We don't have any, any, anything from the text to, to completely exonerate her either. Um, so I, I, I think it's, I think it's fair to say that she was complicit. The, the primary, the prime mover in all this sin, however, is still definitely, um, King David himself. Does that seem fair to you?
Yeah, I think you could say she was just following orders.
Yes. Um, yeah, I, it's, uh, and so less, less responsible perhaps than David, but, um, we also have great examples of people in scripture who, who could have just followed orders, but instead said no.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, uh, not a romantic mixtape, more of a, uh, more of a way to just find more information. Uh, uh, here's my Alanis Morissette, um, reference of the day. Uh, a little too ironic, second Samuel, again, focusing on verse 11. By my count, there are at least three ironic comparisons you could make between Uriah and David. Can you find one? So let's, let's pull up, uh, verse 11 there again. So right in here. "Uriah said to David, 'The ark and Israel and Judah are staying in tents, and my commander Joab and my lord's men are camped in the open country. How could I go to my house and eat and drink and make love to my wife? As surely as you live, I will not do such a thing.'" So you see anything ironic in there?
He's specifically citing the fact, well, how can I eat and drink? And then also make love to my wife when that's exactly what King David wanted him to do?
It's exactly what King David wanted him to do. And so that, that, that's ironic. And what else is ironic about that? Uriah says, "How could I make love to my wife? I would not do such a thing." And yet, David had made love to his wife.
And David stayed home from war, and David's, you know, just lounging around, it looks like.
Yes. You know, Uriah is so faithful to his calling as one of, as a soldier, while David, the commander, sitting around. Well, what, one more, well, look at the very last sentence of it. I find this really ironic. Uriah says, "As surely as you live, David, I will not do such a thing." What is David's response to Uriah saying, "As surely as you, David, live?" David's response is going to be? Well, then I'll kill you. "As surely as you live, I will not do such a thing." David's, David's solution is, well, then you have to die. As surely as you live, I will not do such a thing, David's David's solution is, well, then you have to die. Um just. Just an incredibly ironic, you know, statement there and and um. You know, that that Uriah righteous Uriah is is such a a great foil. For for here sinful King David that that you you look at that comparison, you go. Oh, now I get it, now I understand.
Should David have been up at the front? As commander?
Uh yes, um. In fact. Yeah, David's. David continued even after this, David did continue to. To fight, physically fight. Uh until finally in one of the battles, um he did uh uh as he started to get older. Uh he did become exhausted and one of his mighty men had to come to his rescue and save his life. And so at that point, they said, no, you're you're done, you're you're retired from the physical fighting. Um and also, if you remember later on in his life, when uh during Absalom's revolt revolt. Um the the generals, you know, David said, I'm gonna go out with you. And the general said, at this point, it's just too risky. Uh the the whole point of this is to is Absalom is trying to replace you, if you die. This whole thing. Ends and all of us will be killed as traitors, so we can't risk you in the battle. So yes, David. David very much was a warrior king. Uh and that's what he was supposed to be doing. Ah uh Semper Fidelis um. Always faithful, read verses fourteen and fifteen, is David taking a risk here or did he know something about Uriah? Once you realize the risk slash not risk that David took, what kind of taste does it leave in your mouth? Um this was one that I never really realized uh until I, you know, studied this a little bit more carefully. And I might I might have heard this from somebody, but just then David said to him. Uh oh, alright, so that all happened then, in the morning. David wrote a letter to Joab and sent it with Uriah. In it, he wrote, put Uriah out in the front where the fear fighting is fiercest, then withdraw from him so he will be struck down and die. You know, it's kind of risky. To write somebody's death warrant? And then put it in that person's hand. All Uriah had to do was open the envelope or or unseal the scroll. And he would see that King David had betrayed him, that King David wanted him dead. But King David had such. Faith in Uriah, he knew that Uriah was Semper Fidelis, that Uriah was a. Faithful soldier and that Uriah, even though that Uriah was a one of the mighty men. He knew that Uriah would not read the orders. He would not open somebody else's mail, and so David was confident that he could put Uriah's death warrant into Uriah's own hand. Yeah, I I can see though, well, and it. It leaves a pretty bad taste in your mouth, doesn't it? When uh uh. You know, the Bible talks about the life cycle of sin, that that sin, you know, desire and you know, gives birth to sin and 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 gives birth to death, how it just grows and. And mutates and and uh. You know, that that's what sin can do in our hearts. Is that it just can grow and corrupt so that David went from a man after God's own heart to hear your uh. Take take these orders to Joab. Um and he's fine with that. Uh and it's, you know, we got a little bit more uh wading through yucky stuff. Eggs and omelets. Uh there's an old saying, you can't make an omelet without breaking a few eggs. True, and I love a good omelet. But what if we aren't talking about eggs and omelets? That saying means sometimes you have to make sacrifices, breaking eggs, to get the result you want, omelet. And the sacrifice is worth it. That that last phrase, I think, is important to, you know, the the idea of you can't make an omelet without breaking a few eggs. Well, yeah, it's worth it to break the eggs because of what you get in the end. Review verses eighteen to twenty-one. Uh let's do that and then we'll come back. Uh eighteen to twenty-one is. Uh Ja- Joab sent David a full account of the battle, instructed the messenger, remember, yeah, Joab is telling the messenger, hey. You're about to tell David that we did some stupid stuff. Here's your, here's how you get out of giving the king bad news, so he instructed the messenger. Uh when you finish giving the account, the king's anger may flare up, he may ask you, why did you get so close to the city to fight? Why did you do something so stupid? Right? Didn't you know they would shoot from the wall? Who killed uh Abimelek, son of Jerubba Shish? This was a famous story in the history of Israel. That that everybody knows that if you get too close to the wall, somebody's gonna drop a rock on your head. This is how this works. Um why did you get so close to the wall? If he asks you, then say to him, moreover, your servant Uriah the Hittite is dead. Um and then also, uh I think verse seventeen is is important here, when the when the men of the city came out and fought against Joab. Some of some of the men in David's army fell, more I you're moreover, Uriah the Hittite died. So. The omelet David wanted. The result he wanted was Uriah out of the way so David could cover up adultery. What were the eggs he had to break to give it? And was the sacrifice worth it? So what what uh oh, well, we've got another complicit person, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Joab is also complicit. Um but. You know, the the eggs he had to break to get it, well, obviously there's Uriah. But what else does he have to do? Is he putting only Uriah in danger? Or is he putting Uriah and all the men around Uriah in danger? Um. I I think that's where that verse seventeen is is instructive too, that yet. Intentionally throwing in there, some of the men in in David's army fell. Kind of seems like they were just as murdered as Uriah was. Because in order to get Uriah dead. Um and and to make it look believable. Um Uriah couldn't be the only one to die. Yeah, um I I I like your 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 comment that you made Sue about uh yeah, this. Battle and strategy was one of, it it was like Dave, one of David's spiritual gifts. Yep, he was intent, you know, God gave him those gifts and then. Rather than glorify God with those gifts, he 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 gets sloppy intentionally and gets people killed. Which far from glorifies God and rages God. Every once in a while, uh reading the Bible in the original languages slows me down just enough to think things through. Um I. I enjoy a little bit of Greek, a little bit of Hebrew, uh but I'm not so good at it that I can read it off the page. The same same speed as English, so hearing the words a little more slowly, even a little awkwardly. Can help us see and understand just a little bit more. So verse twenty-six, um in the in the English translation. It, yeah, but what when Uriah's wife heard that her husband was dead, she mourned for him, sounds very matter of fact. Um slowing it down, making it awkwardly literal. And the woman of Uriah. Heard that Uriah her man was dead. And she mourned over her husband. And what connections do you see, what do you feel? Either. Just the fact that there's there's a couple of different words used, you know, Uriah her man. Um she mourned over her husband, yeah, the. The love shared between the two of them, you know, this is this is. This is his his woman, this is her man. Um. I I I remember when my my the first time my wife looked at me and said, you're my favorite person. Um. And and how I felt about that and just the, you know, ah. Uh and then, you know, she mourned over her husband. Uh that that uh. That role, that that, you know, that marriage relationship, that that truth um. You know, just slowing it down a little bit and going, yeah, um. Can you imagine how? How difficult it would be? To mourn a spouse. Knowing that you had a hand in getting them killed. Um because we've already listed Bathsheba as someone who is complicit here. Um I, yeah, I'm not saying that she knew David was gonna kill her, kill him. But imagine the guilt you would feel. As if you find out, oh, Uriah died in battle. Right after he came here. And he and he wouldn't come home and all of this. Just the the amount of pain involved here that that sin brings um. It's a it's a very, very easy, easy Bible Bible passages kind of read over, but to to really sink into it and think about all the implications of it. Yeah. So let me see, where are we at now? Um. Ah, yeah, the spin doctor. Second Samuel eleven verses one to twenty-seven again, uh still in that section, the word brought. Um in verse twenty-seven, um has the idea of gather under the care of. Uh how is David spinning this? Compare that to God's reaction, so when 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 her mourning was completed. David sent for her and brought her, David sent for her and gathered her under the care of his house. And she became his wife. And how's David spinning this? Oh, the king. Yes, yes, look at, look at how good I am that I'm. That I'm caring for the widow of this war hero and and she'll be. She'll be safe in my home and not only will she be safe, she'll be loved in my home, she'll be my wife now and and then, oh, look. We have a miraculous seven month baby. Um, you know, it's just he's really trying to spin this as he is the hero here. Um but what David had done was evil. In the eyes of the Lord, that God God saw through the spin. Um that uh yeah, Matt's comment here, the Lord is seeing right through that. Um yeah, good reminder, yeah, he always does. Uh there is there is no hiding anything from God uh as as much as we think sometimes we can. Uh I believe that was the last one for this uh. This section, yes, no, so now we get into the uh Nathan and uh Nathan and David uh interacting, so. Um the little ewe lamb, Second Samuel twelve, one to fourteen, let's let's read that section and and then jump into that. Uh any questions about this this uh first chunk before we move on?
No questions.
No, great. Um, sorry, so chapter twelve. The Lord sent Nathan to David. When he came to him, he said. There were two men in a certain town, one rich and the other poor. The rich man had a very large number of sheep and cattle, but the poor man had nothing except one little ewe lamb he had bought. He raised it and it grew up with him and his children. It shared his food, drank from his cup and even slept in his ar- in his arms. It was like a daughter to him. Now a traveler came to the rich man, but the rich man refrained from taking one of his own sheep or cattle to prepare a meal for the traveler who had come to him. Instead, he took the ewe lamb that belonged to the poor man and prepared it for the one who had come to him. David burned with anger against the man and said to Nathan, as surely as the Lord lives, the man who did this must die. He must pay for that lamb four times over because he did such a thing and had no pity. Then Nathan said to David. You are the man. This is what the Lord, the God of Israel says. I anointed you king over Israel and I delivered you from the hand of Saul. I gave your master's house to you and your master's wives into your arms, I gave you all Israel and Judah. And if all this had been too little, I would have given you even more. Why did you despise the word of the Lord by doing what is evil in his eyes? You struck down Uriah the Hittite with the sword and took his wife to be your be your own. You killed him with the sword of the Ammonites. Now therefore the sword will never depart from your house. Because you despised me and took the wife of Uriah, the Hittite, to be your own. This is what the Lord says. Out of your own household, I am going to bring calamity on you. Before your very eyes, I will take your wives and give them to one who is close to you, and he will sleep with your wives in broad daylight. You did it in secret, but I will do this thing in broad daylight before all Israel. Then David said to Nathan. I have sinned against the Lord. Nathan replied. The Lord has taken away your sin. You are not going to die. But because by doing this, you have shown utter contempt for the Lord, the son born to you will die. So um. Nathan masterfully mirrors, that shouldn't have apostrophe there, mirrors David's actions with the story of the rich man and the little ewe lamb. And I I think the 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 little praise. Um how did the the poor man acquire his little ewe lamb? It even says in there, little ewe lamb, he had bought. What kind of emotional connection does a poor man have to something he buys? It's a it's a stronger connection, isn't it? Um if 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 money is very, very scarce. Uh and you you put that money into buying a thing, that thing is very important to you. Um what would be the most common way for the rich man to acquire more lambs? He's got a bazillion sheep. Sheep make more sheep. It's easy for him to get sheep. Yeah, it's. For him, it's, you know, this this. Yeah, a a lamb for this traveler? Not a hard thing for him to get get his hands on. Right? And and therefore not that precious to him. Um especially at the beginning of this relationship, David and Bathsheba, you know, David and Bathsheba's relationship does continue on and and I'm not speaking any judgment on the rest of it. But especially in that very beginning moment. Was Bathsheba precious to David? No. She was a naked woman over there and he wanted her, that's it. In fact, he knew who she was, he knew. The the risks and the pain that he was potentially bringing into her life and he did not care, he wanted what he wanted and he took it. Um. Yeah, so that. I I just, I see that that connection there, the just the, yeah, the the poor man goes, I. I want that ewe lamb for my own and I'm going to use. The, yeah, I'm gonna use the 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 only resources I have and it is going to be precious to me, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna treat it as precious to me. Just like Uriah probably treated his wife as someone precious to him. Um David, on the other hand. Nah. Diamond dozen. Master class, Nathan really gives us a master class in in calling someone to repentance, what better example of calling someone to repentance could there be than the prophet Nathan? Pick an adjective below and explain how Nathan was. Courageous, uh Sue, your comment um. Yeah, it it's uh. It's not easy to tell anybody that they're that they sin. But especially to to go to a king with absolute power.
Nathan was courageous doing that.
Yeah.
Could have turned on him.
Could have easily turned on him and David has demonstrated that he is willing to cover up anything by any means necessary. Um so, yeah. Um you see, yeah, his David's or uh the the compassionate nature of uh of Nathan that. That David, David, you know, kind of breaks in and says, I've sinned against the Lord, the Lord has taken away your sin. Um. The 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 compet- the the combination of being both direct and tactful, that he comes to him with this story. Um. That 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 he's kind of tactfully placing it in front of David and saying, this is. This is a situation and and then, you know, finding a way for David to uh um. Finding a way for David to identify his sin. Rather than just, if if Nathan comes up and said, you are evil. Yeah, defensiveness probably would have been the first thing. Instead, because of that that combination of directness, you are the man, but with the tactfulness of the story, yeah, you just. He knew how to make that impact uh on the 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 king that. And Nathan and David also have a long relationship, the king that he loves. And Nathan and David also have a long relationship, the king that he loves, um. And then finally faithful, just the. Man, it would have been so easy for him to, to make excuses and, and try to avoid it. Um. So. Excuses would have been easy. Uh, the Lord gave Nathan a difficult task, one that any of us would probably rather avoid. What perfectly reasonable sounding rationalizations could Nathan have come up with to avoid confronting King David? Um, you know, Matt's, uh, comment here, if I go there and call him out on this, he'll have me killed or kill me himself and then cover up that murder too. Uh, that, that is a very reasonable idea. Um, absolutely reasonable. Um. Other, other rationalizations. It's not gonna bring him back. Right? It's not gonna bring Uriah back. It's not gonna, it's not gonna fix anything, um, could have been a, a rationalization. Um. What damage is this gonna do to the nation? Um, for, you know, the king to be. Um, embarrassed like this, to be, to be exposed like this. Is this gonna lead to a civil war? Um, in a lot of ways, it did lead to a civil war. Uh, with Absalom later on. Um. The. The idea of preserving. Preserving the good name of the government, you know, a lot of things have been hidden throughout history. In the name of preserving the good name of the government, but no, he doesn't. Yeah. He doesn't fall prey to that one either. So. More on the Nathan being courageous and faithful, I suppose. This one, I think, um. It is interesting to get that verse thirteen that kind of jumps out in the middle, um, let, let's look at that one more time, so. You've got. You've got all of this. Um, you know, the, the, the speaking, the facts of what actually happened. And then verses, uh, eleven and twelve. Nathan begins to, uh, to make this list of. Of just hammer blows of consequences for, for David's sin. And then David, verse thirteen, I have sinned against the Lord. And then. Nathan's response and then more consequences after. So, you know, going back here. So you look at verse thirteen, what's the proper response to confession? David confesses his sins, what response does Nathan give? The Lord has taken away. Absolution, yep, you know, that, that cleansing, your, 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 your sins are taken away. What response are we sometimes tempted to give? And my, my, uh, my point in this question is when somebody comes and confesses their sin to us. What responses might we be tempted to give to them when they confess their sins to us?
Especially. Easy, yeah, it'd be so easy to make them feel worse, you know, to say, why did you do that? How could you do that, you know?
Pile on.
You should have known better.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Could be too judgmental.
Yes. Yep.
It could sound like condemnation as well. Yes.
Right. Um. And I think sometimes we, we fall into the trap of, so somebody comes and they confess their sins to us. What's our, 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 uh. Our primary motivation sometimes becomes, I want to make sure that this person doesn't do this again. And so if I want to make sure that they don't do it again, then I'm gonna pile on, I'm gonna make sure they feel real good, they feel real bad. That, that, that they really feel ashamed of their sins. Um, what does that actually accomplish? If you make somebody feel real good and ashamed.
Yeah, just turns them away.
Turns them away and probably turns them right back into whatever sin they just came out of.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Yeah, so. Sometimes, you know, hearing somebody confess their sin, especially if they, if we hear them confess a sin that was, that hurts us. Um, it, it. It is so hard. To simply look at that person sometimes and say, you are forgiven. Um, because. Because, you know, the, 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 the response of, well, yeah, you should be sorry, or I told you so, or, you know, all of those things, those are all self-serving. But they're also self-destroying. Um, whereas. Forgiveness feels like you're giving up your leverage, it feels like you're giving up your safety. It feels like you're giving up your chance of, of keeping that person from hurting you again. Uh, it feels like those things, but what it really is, is it's healing for you as well to forgive, to let go, to cancel that debt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so. I think. That they're looking at this again. Remember, we've got consequences here and we've got consequences here. It, it seems to me like David interrupts Nathan's consequences. With his confession. You know, the day, that, that Nathan's got a list. And, and, you know. But because by doing this, you have shown utter contempt for the Lord, the son born to you will die. The only way the prophet Nathan knows that is if God told him. And told him to tell David, so Nathan has an agenda here, he has some bullet points of things he has to tell David. David interrupts him. With his confession. And Nathan still, Nathan doesn't go, hang on David, I'm not done pounding you yet. Yeah, I'm not done hitting you over the head yet, you gotta wait and then I'll tell you you're forgiven, he said. I have sinned against the Lord. The Lord has taken away your sin. Instant, immediate. He still has to finish the list of consequences. Those are still realities, those are still real, those are, you know, he still has to hear them. But Nathan doesn't, Nathan doesn't even make David wait until the list is over. He tells him he's forgiven right away. Um. Beautiful. Just the way it should be. So that's my. That's my thinking on the why both before and after for the consequences. I, I think David interrupted him. Um, so. So here's a kind of a, uh, um. Application kind of question, uh, fake name, uh, Josie's teenage son has committed a life-changing kind of sin and she knows it. She confides this in you and says, I just don't know what to do, I'm so afraid for him. Uh, how would you approach, approach the situation, you know, talking to Josie, what comfort and encouragement could you give her? Especially coming right out of that question from, or that, that comment about Nathan. What does Josie need to tell her son?
That he's forgiven.
Yeah. Um. Part of her fear might be that she's afraid that he's gonna do it again, she's, she's, she's gonna be afraid of the consequences, you know, afraid of all of these things. Um. Number one, she's gotta go and, she's gotta talk to her son and find out where his heart's at. Find out if there's a, a repentant heart there, and if there's a repentant heart there, then fantastic, there's a, there's a great blessing. Um, there's a, uh. There's an opportunity for, for her son to find out just how much God can forgive. Times like that, I think we, we, we default to the law.
Yeah.
Um. Josie, Josie needs to go and tell her son how bad he was. No. No, Josie needs to go and look for an opportunity just to, to tell her, tell her son that he's forgiven and, and loved by her God. And his God. Uh, and loved by, loved by his mother as well. Um. So. I'll never be the same. Uh, Joe says, I wish I hadn't done that, I'll never be the same, I'll never be as good as I used to be. How would you comfort him? Or how about this? Do you see any logical fallacies in what Joe has said here?
He makes it sound like he was so good before.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
But, um. You know, maybe now he'll be better than he used to be. He won't be the same, he'll be better if he. Learned something from the mistakes.
Mm-hmm. And, and what might he understand better than ever before?
Forgiveness. Yeah, or love from other people.
Love from other people, the grace of God, all of these things. If he thinks that he was good before. Then he probably thinks that's why he was loved. By God and by other peoples, because he was good before. Now he will have to be loved anyway. Um, it's one of my, one of my favorites of distinctions that I try to keep in my head and, and I repeat every once in a while. All of us human beings, we want to be loved because. We want to be loved because we're amazing, we want to be loved because we're nice, we want to be loved because we're beautiful, we want to be loved because, 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 because. God comes to us and says, I love you anyway. And at first, man, that sounds insulting. I love you anyway? No, you should love me because of me. Uh, and God says, no, I love you anyway. Um, if, if. If God loved me because of how great I am. Then every time I sinned, I would be proving that he shouldn't.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe even convincing myself that he doesn't anymore. If he loves me anyway. Then I can depend on that love. I can know that, uh, that that love is. Is, is certain and sure. Um. Life-changing sins, yeah. One of the, one of the great things about them is that they're an opportunity. If somebody comes to you and, and confesses, uh, uh, one of those, you know, life-changing sins, this, this, I'll never be the same, or I wish I hadn't. Um. You, God is giving you an incredible opportunity to help that person understand grace in a way they never have before. Um. And, and a reminder for you of what grace is. Um. Cause we are so good at taking credit and, and having pride. Um. Yeah. I'll never be the same. Of course you won't. Right? Uh, I'll never be as good as I used to be. So exactly how good were you before? Um. Yeah. My Star Wars question. It's a trap. Uh, brotherly admonition is the process of calling a fellow Christian to repentance. That is what Nathan, at the Lord's command, did for David. Nathan is an excellent example for us. But not just in his words and actions and his motivation and attitude as well. Imagine that someone told you a whole tragic story and then when you condemned the villain in the story, made you the villain. From, for, for you Star fan, Star Wars fans out there, you might think, it's a trap. So if, if some random person just walked up to you and did that, yeah. If somebody did that to me, some random person, I would feel trapped, I would feel betrayed, I would feel very, I'd feel very nasty toward that person. What if one of your closest friends told you a whole tragic story and then when you condemned the villain in the story, made you the villain? Um, I guess what I'm, I'm driving at is this, maneuvering someone into a situation where their guilt is undeniable, doesn't necessarily lead to repentance. Um, have you ever tried to do that before? You know, you try to maneuver somebody into a situation where now you can't deny it. Now, now I've got you pinned, now I know, now I know that you'll see, that you're, you'll see that you're guilty. Um, what motivations and attitudes do we need to have if we're going to successfully help a fellow Christian repent? Um. If I'm just trying to trap somebody, if I'm trying to maneuver them into a place where they can't deny it. Chances are, um, are pretty good that I'm doing that for me. I'm doing that so that I can, I can show you how bad you are. Right? Um. Just a warning to be careful about that sort of thing. Uh, I can, I can, I could do exactly what Nathan did. In exactly the wrong way. And completely mess it up. Um, it's that, that, uh, that motivation, that attitude of, um. Well. Of, of love, kindness, of, uh, uh. Uh, the, what, what, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, this. I like this one. Then I realized at some point that I did some variation of that same thing. The humility. Um. The, uh. Yeah. If I, if I, if I can't call somebody to repentance in love, then I probably don't have any business doing it. Uh, agree or disagree? One day David's life was great, the next day it was a mess. Did we have an instant change in David's life? Or did we have a process?
There were a few steps in there, he didn't all of a sudden realize. That he had. Sinned so greatly against God.
Mm-hmm.
And it took him a while to, it was one sin after another too.
Right, right, and, and those. Those sins took place over the course of a few days, over the course of a few. Uh, at, well, at least.
Maybe.
Right? Um, yeah, the, the Uriah thing, that took at least two days, the. It took, it took Bathsheba a little bit of time to figure out that she was pregnant. You know, all, all of these things, it, it, it took some time, it took some. It took some time for David to, to, um. To spiritually rot. Yeah, if, if, if somebody had walked up to David. Um. Maybe a year before this. And said to him, hey, um, any chance you would, uh, cheat on one of your buddies? You know, cheat with one of your buddy's wives and then have him killed? Chances are, I would, I would think that he would say, no, I would never do such a thing. Well, then. He stops. He stops living his role, um, under God, he, he. Just makes decision after decision after decision that he just slowly spiritually. Rot's away until finally it's. The, the strength. To resist temptation is gone and he breaks. Crumbles, he collapses, he's. Yeah, he is a mess. But it didn't happen over one day, it happened over a, over a process. Um. A, uh. An important warning, I think, that, you know, when the, the whole big idea thing, how do we, how do we prevent life-changing sins? If your goal is to prevent a life-changing sin, you, you're, you're biting off more than you can chew. The goal is. Prevent. Spiritual decline. Um, prevent the little sins, the little ones. Um, prevent the, the starving of your new man. Um. One of my. Favorite, uh, uh, pictures, not because it's fun, but because I think it makes sense. Um, yeah, we've all got the little angel, little devil on our shoulders, right? Uh, old Adam, new man, and, uh, if you were to picture those two as, as two dogs in a fight, you've got two dogs in a fight, which one's gonna win? The one you feed. Um. David spent a good bit of time feeding the little devil on his shoulder. And so then when it came time, that little devil on his shoulder just ate the little angel on his shoulder. To the point where it probably killed it. Yeah, it, it's entirely possible that David, David fell from faith during this time. Um, you, you read his Psalms and it's just. You know, the, the penitential Psalms is like, oh, yeah, how, how could I have done this? I can't see in David's heart, but he was definitely in danger of that happening. Um, because he had starved the little angel on his shoulder and he'd fed the, fed the devil. Um, so. Yeah, um, we must prevent decline, not just try to prevent. Big sins.
I, I think his decline maybe started already when he didn't go out to war.
Yes.
Why was he not doing what he was? Used to doing, I mean, he, he started out with. Showing some signs of change and then. Then he got to the big sin.
Mm-hmm. And. You know, you, you look at, at David too and, um. All of David's greatest expressions of faith and, and examples of faith. They are almost all in the context of, of. His military exploits.
Mm-hmm.
David and Goliath. David cutting off the corner of Saul's rope. Um, going into the, uh, the, the camp and stealing the spear and water jug from, from by. Um, going into the, uh, the, the camp and stealing the spear and water jug from, from by ne- next to Saul's head. Uh, just all of these things. Do you think maybe God put him in the right role where he would be spiritually in the best shape? Yes. And then when David removes himself from that role. All of a sudden he starts to crumble. Oh, that was the last, oh, I forgot to do a revisit it. Um. Let me see here. Oh, well, we, we, we did the additional discussion ones too. That's fine. That's, we, we, we had a good time. Um, but yeah, the, uh, the, coming back to this one, um, if only I hadn't. Yeah, those, those regrets that come from life-changing sins. Uh, how do we deal with them? Any, any thoughts after, after studying this? You know, I don't wanna steal your thunder by just sharing my thoughts, but. Um, anything that's kind of come out for you about dealing with them or, or, or avoiding them in the first place? If not, that's okay.
I'm in the word. We, we, you know, we really need to, um, constantly, um, be vigilant and, and grow in the word. Because when we're not with him. It's easy to let a lot of other stuff in. None of which are good.
Yes, yes. And then just to maybe, you know, reiterate one more time, yeah, I, I think that there's a lot of people out there, um. You know, a lot of people who. Who worry or about, um, about others or, or maybe, um, are. Worried about their own lives and, and, uh, yeah, I, 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 uh. I can remember times in my life where, yeah, I, I was worried about. Yeah, sins that I might commit or, or, or things that I might do and, and, um. And, and was kind of like white knuckling my way through my life going, no, I'm not gonna fall to that temptation or, or the pet sin that, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna avoid that. It's, it's, it's usually not about avoiding the big sin. It is about. Um, growing closer and closer to my Savior. It is about growing in my, my trust in Him about. Um, making those little decisions every day that, that I, I, I live for Him and with Him. It's. We're gonna get a whole lot more power and mileage out of doing those little things that God would have us do. Rather than, than looking over our shoulder at some big thing going, oh, 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 what if that happens? What if that happens? What if that happens? All those little things one day at a time.
I think sometimes it's hard for us to get past, um, how we feel about it. And just put our feelings aside and say, it only matters what, how God feels about it and not really what I think. It's, it's what he thinks that's really important. If he's forgiving, then it's, I should accept that and not. Worry about what other people think or, or just keep revisiting it over and over again. Just let it go.
Yep. Yeah, I've used the picture that we, we, uh, we sometimes end up juggling sins. Take a sin and confess it to God, you know, tossing it up to Him. Um, and then, and I'm sorry, God, but instead we reach out and we grab it out of the air and keep it and say, uh, but now I need to feel bad about it. And until the point we get to this point where we're sitting there just juggling our sins. Uh, constantly handling and, and messing with and trying to keep. A hold on all these things that God, that they, they belong to Him already. Why don't we let Him keep them?
Yeah.
And then maybe one last little thing is, you know, we worry about life-changing sins. Let us not forget that we have a life-changing Savior. That he, he, his. His love for us, his grace, his, his sacrifice for us, especially as we go through, through Lent here and we get to Good Friday and La Ha. That is life-changing. No matter what, no matter what sins I or the people I love commit, no matter how much those sins can change my life, those changes. Pale in comparison to the change that Jesus has made in our lives now and forever. Um, don't give yourself too much credit for your ability to change things with your sins. Jesus can change more with His grace. Shall we close with a brief prayer? Lord Jesus. There is no force in this universe greater than your grace. There is nothing that creates greater change than your grace. And, uh. Your blood, your death has covered over every sin. And your resurrection means that there is always hope and the future and glory, uh, waiting for us. Keep us close to you. Keep us rooted and established in your word. Help us to make daily decisions that keep us close to you. Protect us and the ones we love from, from, uh, from, from great sin. But even more than that, let your grace shine so clearly. In the lives of every sinner. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, uh. Always a good time. Uh, I look forward to, um, uh. After, after Easter, we'll, we'll pick it up with some other topic if you're, uh, interested in joining again. And, uh, I'll send out information. There'll be announcements about it, but, uh, I, I think we're. I think we're having a good time and, and I can see from the, from the YouTube analytics that people actually do watch the things, so. It is, it is. So, anyway, uh. See you again soon.
Okay, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.